Welcome. First up is review of a plan for parking at fifty South Buckout Street for Astor Buckout LLC. I'd like you guys up.
Where do you want?
Um, where do you want your most comfortable?
Chairs.
A little retirey.
Yeah, the retirey was fine.
Yeah.
You know, the screen's there, so we'll have to figure that out. We just got this, uh... I don't know if you need to go out or if you need to go up to the screen or point the thing.
No, it's pretty self-explanatory. There's only three images in that sheet.
Okay.
Oh.
If you look at the one that says "Presentation," right there. No, right there.
Let's rename it first. Click that thing.
Okay. So, the project is for a modification to the existing gray building that's to the south of, um, the Trent Building. And the goal is to add parking to the lower level of that building, the ground level. And the way that that would happen is you would basically take the... replace the structure on the lower level of it and open up the back of the... the front of the building to allow circulation for the cars in it. So, if you click through there, there's just like a quick... you get a sense of it really quickly. The plan is probably the most confusing. Oh, what does that do? Oh, I'm sorry. No, just the next page. Just... Oh, yeah. So, there, you see the building. This is... It's the building. Basically, we're kind of opening it and it fills out.
So, we're standing now near the river?
River.
River.
Yeah, and this is actually the rear of the building, which is a view that you would never have. But it shows the potential for excavation. So, if you click to the next one, which is the vendor.
This is where the loft is?
Yes.
Loft would be on the top floor.
Loft would be over here. Right, and that's not changing?
No. No, so the... So, this is kind of the goal. What you see here is that the... it's basically taking the bottom level out of it.
Oh.
Using that parking.
Oh, it goes all the way through?
Right. And then, this right now is existing, existing parking deck. There's a ramp into this portion of the building that's going to use the parking right now. And then, this is the...
So, you... Can you go back to the...
Now, you'll understand.
Oh, yeah.
It's always interesting how you maintain access to the first floor.
Right. So, if I may? This... This is the line of the outside wall of the building as it exists. What allows us to do this is we have this driveway, which allows us to access this way and do this. You don't come in this way.
Right.
All the circulation's going to come through it out here.
Because they open bays, the cars can't pull out through the bays themselves?
If there's no car here, they certainly can pull straight out.
Yeah, or those cars there. So, that in-out is really to get into the back of the space.
Right.
And then, what I'm saying is on the first floor, not the ground floor, the first floor where there's existing, that ramp is being maintained.
Right.
Right, for the existing, uh, one that you're existing from above.
Right.
Right, we don't have a plan of that, but that... there wouldn't be any change to this.
That's not changing at all.
Right.
And that's because that retaining wall can actually hold the grade there.
Well, so...
So, there was something we had talked earlier with that was very high retaining wall. This is actually existing grade, so this retaining wall's not that high.
So, what... There's a boiler in here. Right now, we take the boiler out. And this... You see there's no parking in this corner? This is where the retaining wall would have to go through here. And it actually stops like right in here. There's no need for it. If you were to see the topography of it, it's...
That's what I'm trying to get a sense of.
Yeah.
Because it was, like I said, where you see it coming down, um, here. This is the existing ramp into the first floor, right? Right in the same area?
Yes, above it, yes. So, you can see the two foots up was here going up.
Right.
So, you have a retaining condition here and then a reduced retaining condition here. So, there's this one, you might have a few feet or something, or, you know, any issues or something like that. Then you have a high retaining condition there. And then, this is the first pass to try to get the concept, uh, you know, like the details of that in terms of how much.
So, this corner might have a 12-foot retaining wall.
Yeah, sure. That's it.
And then, what then would you say?
Yeah, that's the one. But then, there are other projects that we looked at where you tried to make more use of this. I think we did more driving Fisher for this building a while ago and tried to go back. And then, suddenly, you have like a 20-foot retaining wall. Just like it's cost prohibitive for the spot, you know, the spots that you get. You can't spend, you know, too much money to get the spot. So, this is a much more cost-effective way.
So, right now, where those spots would be is just... is just space behind the building?
Yeah. It's pretty flat as it is, except that one corner.
Is that a drive around behind the building now, or is that just empty space behind the building now?
It's just empty space. There's no way to get behind here. Ramp, ramp, property, tree. Yeah, ramp, property, tree. He's lower than us.
So, those... That's a pretty... Close down. Right behind the building.
These are two-foot acreage?
Yeah.
Two, four, six, eight.
Gets steeper, right?
Yeah, gets steeper.
Are trees that would stay or be removed just as...
They're just shown. We haven't even... We don't have... We don't have... None of this is really taking any trees out. It's not known fact because of trees.
Well, I would think that a couple of those would definitely be lost.
We have to see what's back there. There's probably a lot of weed trees and stuff like it. It turns out it's back there.
Nature's sensitive to...
Right. So, the trees that would potentially be impacted would be so far down so that they're probably...
So, Bill, how many new spots are you going to get on that ground floor, indoor ground floor?
Fifty-six. Uh, no. Forty. Four of forty is forty.
And there's no change to the number of spots on the outside ground?
Well, we already have kind of an approval to do this corner. We haven't done it yet. We wanted to... We wanted to look at it, um, as part of this project. So, there's... There. No, that will be.
And the existing spots on the first floor part is going to be the same number that you have now?
Right.
And you're using those spots?
No, we're not using them now.
Okay.
We'd like to use them where we have that. Larry.
Code issues.
We'll probably open and fix that as long as there's a... You know, we talked about that.
There's zoning-related issues and then there's just building code-related issues, right?
Seems like the zoning is the big one, right?
Yeah. You know, building to just... There's, you know, you'd have to separate the garage from the living, from the habitable space on the top floor. You know, there's work that would have to do to do that.
Those are building codes.
Those are building codes separate from the...
Just the fact that there's no parking structures and...
Right.
That's what I've had, because the first floor has been kind of winked at for quite a while as when it's been used.
Right. Right. And I think, you know, I don't know, um, when the park or code was put in place, whether considered that this existed, you know, or it may have never considered that that existed. You know, that's part... I mean, I think we talked with Mary Ann and Chris before we started, was that the point would be to look at what would be the very narrow text change that would allow this project to happen without having to pick bigger bucks? Because what you're asking to do... This piece, this piece is actually, I don't think, is addressed by the parking structure code because it's deck elevated, so this is not deck elevated. So, this piece is not really what we're asking for, but at the same time, you do this... If Phil's going to put the money in this building, he would correct everything.
One of the things that, you know, that I'd like to... to point out, you know, years ago, and I'm not sure half of you were on the board at that time, when the last go-around went when they changed the zoning and this got put into the business district, it was kind of done in a way where, you know, we know that there's going to be issues going forward, but when those issues come up, we'll address them one at a time. Because this building in the business district doesn't conform with the rest of the business district. It's different. It's the odd building out. It's not on Main Street. It's larger than everything else. All those, you know, has a lot of things that aren't similar to the Main Street Business District. And now, this is one of the... This is one of the, uh, you know, fallouts of that zoning change.
I mean, I think a lot of it too, and I'll talk about it briefly, is, um, I think the... what became the third rail issue was building a new structure that was going to, you know, block all views and sun. But, um, you know, so I think that the reuse of buildings, you know, is itself makes it fairly narrow. So, I can't imagine, you know, in thirty seconds, trying to come up with other buildings that are similarly situated that you could even do this in, and there's probably... You know, maybe you come up with a small handful. If we get a small handful.
The ground floor, well, no, again, if we're not... we're just talking about the deck elevated stuff, right? It would be...
There's not many buildings like this.
How many spots are on that first floor? That's how many you're saying now? Twenty-four? So, forty on the bottom, twenty-four on the top, whatever's outside.
Right.
And... It comes very much to, um, to solving that whole problem.
Is it sixty?
Yeah, yeah.
So, for Metro North spaces, um, the ones beyond that, those are Metro North? Yeah.
These are Metro Norths.
Yeah.
These spots are easements for us.
Yeah, that's it.
For access, we have this closed off now, and we use this for three parking spaces because it's... we have the easement for it. So, we pick up... We don't park here because we do pick up three spots here.
We'll address that with Metro North in the future. Uh, the meter parking, yeah, is this way, like, you know, initially, this is to the south.
And so, the elevator is the elevator that's there now that you use to get up?
Correct.
Right.
So, before... Before we decided to talk to you guys about this, we brought in... we brought an engineer in to understand the issues. First issue that we wanted to make sure is that if you take this... if you take the facade out, what's the... what's the structural impact of the building? And actually, there's none. We got lucky on that one. There's a...
Steel beams.
All the facade is, it's all fake. It's all sits on steel beams. So, what's... the steel beam that's here will carry the rest of it. It's already... you can do that. We also...
It's just a bit...
Excuse me?
What is the building though, fellows?
Uh, no, fifties, I think. The second thing we did was we had the engineer look at removing the deck on the first floor. Just pour concrete on it, and the building again can handle that. It can... we could take the wood floor out, put a Q-deck in and pour four inches of concrete.
Oh, you know, yeah.
And we could do that. We've already checked it out. That makes it fireproof from... In which you're going to need the building, how you're going to need fire suppression. So, before we started looking, we wanted to understand those issues. All the grading is okay. We have access to storm drainage. We're probably going to have to put in some... what do you call those things?
Coltex?
Coltex. Yeah. I mean, the thing is, in the location that you're, uh... I mean, we can talk about the engineering part of it, but you're so close to the river and you're hump effectively unfilled. Sometimes you can't get the water into the ground. So, it might be more about just controlling the water and getting it into the river. You know, that's where it's ultimately going to be. It's going to try to find some way to treat it.
Treat it or slow it down. So, the residents that are sitting up here, they're not... It's going to be... it's going to look exactly like it looks like today for them.
So, Bill, I have one other question for you. This is a little bit, you know, prescient, I guess, but people who are coming into the ground floor parking, I assume they're going to... are people working at, uh...
Yeah.
The large building? I don't think it's there.
There's going to be a staircase here. He didn't... didn't put it in yet.
So, you're going to just walk up the route to the existing parking lot?
Yeah.
Okay, that makes a lot of sense.
So, are the building codes, um, allowed... if you have two layers of parking and then people on the third floor, that's okay?
Yeah, yeah, that's... Well, you have to have the right separation, you have to have the right ventilation, right?
He was talking about the floor.
Yeah, that's what I heard.
Yeah. So, it's... and you can't have combustibles, materials in the parking, but the building has very little combustible in it. It has, um, you know, mostly it's wood floor that we're talking about, so...
Bill, do you still need that sliver of village property to make this work?
No. Nothing will happen behind the building on the Buckout Street side.
Could you show the picture of the actual building?
Of the rendering?
Rendering?
Yeah.
So, I don't know if we put them both up.
Is the entrance to the theater?
Yeah.
Do you want to show the...
You can show it. I had it rendered. I had it rendered.
It's either gray because it's the gray building.
It's like it's a silly dance.
Right. You know, just...
So, it's just that, that's not...
Yes.
You want to stay?
Yes.
Yes, so that shows it with a souvenir, right?
It is gray and red.
Looks better in red.
I think so, too.
So, what's the... what's it made of?
It's... would just be painted, um...
Painted, like stuck all the way through the mound?
Yeah, like, no, parking cleanup, man.
He was saying, we didn't know that parking for there's only like five cars.
Yeah, right.
Well, the guy that rendered it in Argentina, he did not.
I think the rendering guy did is didn't realize there's no trees to reflect in the windows.
Oh, on this side, yeah.
Yeah. No, he showed retaining wall that slows down and the slope of the real slope goes up here.
So, that retain... The line is not really accurate, right? See that? You can't tell what that is behind the brown?
Yeah.
Right, that's... it could be soil, could be retained, but what it's probably going to be is like retaining here.
John, what I told him is we'd probably do something like this.
Oh, like...
Lock on the side to keep the...
Right.
Yeah. At least for a ten feet or so.
Right. And, you know, that would be addressed during the planning board review when we figure out what's the slope that they'll accept and what's the stormwater impacts adjusting that slope.
So, you would expect to keep using the first floor as you're using it now?
I'm giving up ten thousand square feet forever. That's a big deal.
So, that's the trade. You're giving up rentable space to get the parking taken. But it will have minimal impact on anything else in the area.
Obviously, there are some businesses there now.
There's a... No shop there, right? There's some kind of a fabric down there?
Oh, the guy that does the mirrors?
Oh, it's mirrors?
Yeah, he does them out of, um, out of foam and film. There's nothing heavy. You can pick one up with your finger.
I see.
They're called glass, those mirrors.
Is it going into the main building or...
I'm moving, yeah. I haven't talked to anybody that's in there now because I'm not... I'm not putting carts in front of ours. But we have reform.
It seems like it solves a lot of...
Yeah, does anyone have a religious adoration to parking structures? I don't think that I get the sense that anyone does.
Parking structures in current buildings that are already morally defined?
I'm nervous about that. I don't know about how... I mean, I'm really new with a narrow definition if that's what's recommended, but I'd rather see how we would like to be able to allow parking structures along the... how to say, you know, tucked in even down to the village parking lot at a quarter of Main. It might be that that's too big of a nut to crack, but at the same time, I'm looking at you, Mary Ann, because I'm not sure I...
Well, once you do that mark, then you're going to have to do a secret review. And the more properties this could apply to the bigger deal of this. Whereas if, let's say, you said it was, you know, only permitted in the business district and only permitted in an existing building. And then, and it turns out this is the only building that meets it, and this is the only one...
And you wouldn't worry about it being too targeted at that point?
No.
And then, I think about the municipal law, because we don't have to follow zoning laws, so you can do it everywhere.
It won't be screened.
I... You think we just want to think a little bit harder about whether there's any other buildings in the business district and if there are, you know, and it doesn't make sense, you distinguish it another way, but...
They could start with the draft of the lang... like, get to a language first and then try to determine if there's anything else that applies to...
If the board's comfortable with this thing, I can come up with some... I'll talk to Ed. Ed'll have a good sense of...
I would like to hear, I think, from the residents who didn't like the other plan and see what they think about this plan since, uh...
Before we go to the residents, can we have one other question about this?
Of course.
I'm not even sure if I'm being picked up by the mics or not because it's toxic, it's not... Yeah, well... Okay, so anyways, the question I have was, you know, before we were talking about, um... for want of a better word, you know, leverage... leveraging some of the trade-offs on the parking lot on South Buckout to yield benefits to the village in terms of the sidewalk along South Buckout, South Astor to the train station. So, what happens to that discussion? Because now, all the development is, you know, contained within this one building. There's no functional development along South Buckout. So, does that mean that the village no longer has that leverage? And we have to look at a different approach to the sidewalk for, but... That's just... I don't know if there's answer.
Sounds like not that I would think that that would stop the building.
We wouldn't be willing to do that work for that. We're already giving up 10,000 rentable square feet in perpetuity, which is tremendous.
You're keeping your clients.
We're giving a lot back.
I could see some kind of joint project, though, potentially, you know?
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure we could work on something, but I wouldn't be willing to just say, hey, we'll do that whole thing.
Are you still planning a facade renovation on the east side of the building?
I'd like to. But you have to straighten the parking out first. You don't do it without that.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, but when you do that work, it might be even, you know...
You're going to need to sit down and do again.
Sure.
Because that's going to be all on... Part of that's on village property.
Absolutely, okay. Right. But again, when you're... if you're doing stuff, how's it do it?
That strange intersection, right? Station Road with the extra width and stuff like that. It seems like if you looked at that holistically, it builds in that piece, right?
And that would... that's when we would address the existing sidewalk.
I think you'd address the top, yeah.
As well as the sidewalk that comes down by Red Barn?
Yeah, that whole thing.
All of that makes sense. That's crazy. All right. That's when that would happen.
Sure.
I just wanted to end that discussion. I don't want to... Quite pleased to be sure. We're decoupling here.
Well, you know, I'm trying to... I'm trying to move this project forward, and it was pretty clear that you guys and the residents didn't want to do the Astor Street, you know, or the Buckout Street lot. So, it felt like this was the best move to...
That's pretty creative. Yes. Now, all the traffic is coming down, um, South Astor to South Bridge Street or whatever that's called. What is that called in front?
It's just right into the Metro North parking lot, same as the north one.
So, it's all coming along that way?
All onto the Metro North parking lot, yeah.
Except for the first floor, which is...
Correct.
It would... Because it's going to require some change, there would have to be some kind of secret review. I don't think you need to do a big EA after waiting especially if you're running here. But you might want to acquire a traffic circulation study or something to make sure that one... And then, once... once the... once any questions that you have and by amount of questions that you have are resolved, then you would, assuming they're resolved, you would be able to neck back it.
For the zoning, for a tax amendment?
For the...
Yes.
For the zoning amendment. And also, actually, it's going to... this is... since it's going to require a secret review from the planning board, too, because...
Put the specifics of the building itself.
Yeah, and it's... we don't see much secret before the planning board because almost everything's one and two-family houses, and they're exempt from secret, but this isn't exempt from it. I think, I mean, I would have to check whether it fits in any of the exceptions, but I think probably not. So, I think there would have to be, but it could be all be one big...
I think the question would be also, does the board, do you see any other impacts other than traffic that we would have to prepare for?
Well, you know, potentially the same. Noise, fumes. I mean, it's all the same thing you'd get with any kind of parking area, so I don't know that... how widely that would be a problem. And in some ways, I just think that would be probably a narrow focus for the planning board.
One of the things to remember when you do something like this, where you have a building that's being served by a certain number of people that are driving, is that you're often relocating parking, right? So, people are parking on streets, parking wherever they can to get to work. And now, the more parking that you have that's dedicated, it doesn't always... and this is what the parking study will look into. It doesn't always mean that there's more cars as a result, right? It's collective.
Yeah, but it's actually probably the focus would be more on circulation and actually, um...
True. Reduction in volume of cars due to employees would probably be filled up by other people finding the old spaces.
You know, it's always different with office space compared to retail. You know, office people come and stay all day.
Yeah.
Retail comes and goes every so many minutes, right?
So, then we have the other contingent of non-villagers who come in and take the train and, I guess, take the hit on the ticket because it's cheaper than parking.
Not fill toes in, though. That's... That's under our control, our parking regulations.
Right.
We'd probably put a gate on the slot.
So, I know it's a work session, but there are some residents here, if any of them would like to make any comment, I think it'd be welcome to take on.
Do not make you wait through the traffic that their local law, except if you want us to.
Can you come up to the...
Sure.
Kevin Gallagher from Seventy-seven South Buckout. This is actually, this is when I saw the plans originally. I thought, so far, so good. As a matter of fact, when the mayor and I took a walk through the area, I mean, months ago, I said, if I was a build, I would remove like, you know, a couple of trees and then the base of the building and put angle parking in there, and then this is just a step further. So, uh, I still... So I still, my opinion still is, you know, so far, so good. It's a step in the right direction.
Great, thanks.
Cheryl Bramwine, Eighty Five South Buckout. Our issue has just always been about the rezoning of the residential lots on South Buckout Street. So I have no issue with an existing structure having parking use.
Great.
So just to summarize in my own head, the total number of new spots that you're creating here is how many?
Forty-three, somewhere around that.
Forty-three, yes. And the assumption is, pretty much, that these are already cars that are coming because your tenancy is almost full there, right?
Well, the tenancy is fluid. We have a tenant that has moved out. They haven't vacated, but they've moved out and they'll be replaced. So within the last few months, they've been gone. We will get new tenants in. But yes, it's pretty much exactly like you said.
So they're on the streets, they're somewhere.
Right. Right now, it's really low because they had a big operation. They all moved apart.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Great.
Very creative solution solves a lot of the objections of the neighbors.
Maybe Kevin Gallagher, you take credit for the plan.
Put my name on the...
But considering the tenor of some of the comments, the fact that three plus eight is so far so good is pretty good.
Great.
So we know the next step.
Good thinking, Bill.
Thanks, Mike.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, thank Kevin.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you.
Oh, thank Kevin.
Oh, John, yeah, I do.
Bill's idea. Oh, yeah.
Kevin and Bill.
Sometimes you have to get all your work done.
Okay. Yeah, so I assume the thing seven years ago was you had to step, would be for me to wrap these up. Puck had to figure out what zone change.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
And I'm assuming we want a zone change that will just cover this?
Yeah.
So it would be fairly narrow.
Yeah.
Only gray buildings, yeah.
You're going spaces on the third floor.
Next item is review of revised draft of the local law. I mean, you're going to create the North Broadway mixed-use districts.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think I see this, um... No, I just didn't know if anybody from the public would see it as well. Larry just sort of... That way, you run, okay, there's the public. And that should just remind us all of where we are, where we are now. Now, remind myself. Now, the last time we talked about this was at the November thirteenth work session. And then we went through all the suggestions that had been made on the September draft. We had Chad Curd, Leo McLaughlin, John Sheehan, Max Sines, and Strubber, one in residence. I made all those changes, laws that were already agreed on, plus a couple of other tweaks. And I guess I'll go through them now.
Okay.
Do you have, do you have the version that's got yellow mark in it?
No.
No, okay, no. So go to page three.
I love page three, right?
Yeah. Now, this time will be better. Okay, B on the top, right now it says, the change there was it previously talked about attached one-family dwellings and multifamily dwellings being only, I think, having not more than a certain number of units in it and only being a certain length, which is what the provisions in the multifamily district was just lifted and put into this. And somebody pointed out quite properly that what you're trying to do is reduce the amount of building. Why would you do that? So we took that limitation off. So it's just an attached one-family and multifamily dwellings allowed. I mean, you've still got the maximum number of units determined based on psych capacity analysis. There's no limit on the size. I mean, there may be, I mean, you may just decide it should be or something. But it's not, it's not dictated by the code. Okay, then for both, both the youth boutique hotels, which is in D and in L, for bed and breakfast establishments, there was a requirement that the access and egress be from Broadway. And Sunny Side Lane was added to that. So the access can be from either Broadway and from East Sunny Side Lane. And that's the change in L on page four.
Some of the page numbering might be a little bit off because we used... Yeah, it may just be off by a page, but we'll...
Okay, on page five, C2 on the yard requirements, the tiny change that where the board can permit essentially a variance at that distance to Broadway. If it would serve a significant public interest, a significant was added there. Point was there all along. Then the next change is two pages later, okay, when we get to FAR. All right, there was a provision. Remember, the overall FAR is point three, point thirty. But five, sub five says that the FAR of any local landmark designated by the Board of Trustees or any local landmark, oh, okay. The FAR of any local landmark or the FAR associated with the adaptive reuse of any building that the ARB determines is historically significant won't be included in the FAR. But as long as you don't go above point ten, above the point thirty. So you could get a bonus of up to point ten for adaptive reuse of a historic building or if you have a local landmark. Then six is new and it was, there's a little bit of overlap with five, but I'll read it. The Board of Trustees, in its sole discretion, may permit the FAR to exceed point thirty, but not more than point forty if it determines that the proposed development or element of the development would further an important public benefit, such as the provision of affordable housing beyond the village code requirements, the preservation of a historically significant structure, or the provision of a sidewalk along Broadway. Essentially, you can get a bonus of point ten in FAR if you provide something that the village, the village board considers to be an important public benefit.
So Mary, could you explain again to me, because I'm slow today, I guess, why do we mention historically significant structure there and then local historical significance? Why is it, why does there need to mention that twice?
Well, I guess it doesn't...
Is that just an example in that?
Yeah, that's just an example. But the important distinction, Mark, is in five, the Board of Trustees doesn't have to decide that it's...
Right, I understand that. I didn't know if there was...
I think there's definitely overlap between the two.
Okay, just to ensure.
Okay, then, then further down on that page, under Design Regulations, the whole lighting thing was added, about exterior lighting. And that's compliance with the new provisions we have on exterior lighting that were added to the site plan, site plan regulations. Essentially, that the lighting has to be limited to the amount of necessary possession convenience. There has to be dark sky compliant. And there's a couple of exceptions there, the local use landscape lighting and lighting that's got a vagueness. Okay, so two more pages under the sections, reads additional requirements to special permits. Page ten on...
Yeah, it's at the bottom of the table.
Okay, then, I'm here, just gonna spill over to eleven. The A, yeah. That strengthened the stone wall language.
It's on the top of the next page.
The top of page eleven. What's the little A? It says, "Stonewall should not be removed or modified, except if it is absolutely necessary to the proposed use." Language was strengthened. And then I added a, I spoke, the operative language of the paragraph is that the planning board shall require that no special permit be issued until the planning board is satisfied with proposed use and was added, "will be in harmony with the character and appearance of neighboring properties in the village as a whole." Using that scenario is the overall site, special permit language talked about the district door jib lines and something across the street might not be in the same district. So it would include any properties across the line. Then, on the next page, under the traffic stuff, those are just some real technical changes about calculating traffic impacts. But in B, is that on the page eleven?
Yes, it's actually the top, top of twelve. Yeah, large, uppercase B.
Yeah, we had language, "no special permit may be issued." Using Strawberry Lane, "accessory ingress unless the applicant makes whatever improvements are necessary to ensure and maintain safe passage over Strawberry Lane." And this language was added, "from Broadway to the point on Strawberry Lane where the use has the accessory ingress." We have to...
Going up there.
Then, that's pretty much it until the very end. And we didn't talk about this, but I added the thing about, in our taxation section...
Page fifteen.
Where are we?
Page fifteen, yeah.
There it is. We have a provision that all hotels are required to receive a special permit pursuant to these sections. And if they do, they have to be registered and pay taxes. I just added this new section, two twenty-four, eight forty-seven, eight, because this is a new... That's all, yes, that's really the technical. So those are the changes. I don't, I think, I don't think there's any disagreement about any of it. But we did hear further from the Maxon representatives requesting that the FAR limit be increased to point forty with a point oh five bonus, which, you know, the Board of Trustees thought that would permit them a maximum FAR of point four or five. And their position in short was that, you know, the most likely use for their property, which is assisted living facilities, which is with their cut off this form of requirement of building their size in order to be economically viable. And FAR of point forty would permit them a seventy thousand square foot building. And FAR of point four five would permit it closer to seventy-nine thousand. Larry and I met with Ashlyn Lyon and she provided data about the size of senior living facilities in the area and wanted to see if in fact, you know, something that's seventy thousand square foot would be viable. And she gives this spreadsheet that... Did she have the...? Yeah, can you put that?
I can zoom in, yeah, sure.
Can you put it on there?
Yeah. It may be a little, I can zoom in.
Anyway, in short, it does show that, that, it's senior living residences in the area and ones that have been recently. I would say the third one down, Larry, the recent construction, third box down, yeah.
Yeah, I just have to...
It's probably the most relevant.
Yeah, I know, I know. My zoom in tool's not here, unfortunately.
Oh.
I'll figure it out, hold on.
View control and scroll the mouse ball.
That'll do it? Oh, yeah, you're right. Yeah, thank you.
Service rotation. I rely on that and alt-tab all day.
And they actually did show several assisted living facilities in the seventy thousand square foot. Surely there's bigger ones, but there's...
Those are the club, it's like...
So anyway, as it's drafted now, the maximum FAR is point thirty with the discretionary bonus of point ten, so it could go to point forty. And remember, you get the discretionary bonus if the board decides, say, let's say your building was only point oh five and it was really important that that building be kept, it could give a bigger bonus.
Is that building point oh five?
That building is point oh five.
He's pulling it out of here.
But I don't know that we knew that when we came, you know, when we first came up with this point oh five limit. It's just by accident, you know, it turns out to be, yeah. So anyway, so that's the outstanding issue. Otherwise, I would say the zoning is, you know, good to go, but once they have one that been, and I see they have the whole team here, we want to make the decision.
So just sort of going back through our history of thinking through the FAR, we started at point two-five, as I recall, with a bonus?
No, I don't think they had a bonus. We started with point two-five.
We started with point two-five. And now we've sort of incrementally...
And we went up to point three without the bonus. And now we came up with the bonus. Oh, I know the other thing I wanted to, just to, I sent you guys an email. I don't know if everybody saw, but just to give you an idea of what it looks like with an FAR. The house north of the Carpe, the White House, the Carpe Yellow. And you can sort of see the outlines of that property. The FAR of there is point two-six. Just for, you know, to get a sense of what...
Oh, just that one building?
Of the building, the stuff in the back. If you drive up the Carpe Yellow driveway, you can see in the back, there's a bunch of, an additional, right, stuff in the back.
You don't mean the stone buildings back there?
I think it might be connected with what?
You don't mean the stone...
No, no, I'm not talking about the Carpe Yellow.
You mean the white doors?
The building between the White House and the apartment.
Yeah, right, okay, that building, it's close. But you don't mean the close to the road one?
Yeah, it's close to the road, yes, it's the one I'm talking about.
Now I'm totally confused.
Larry's gonna show us.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Larry's very consuming now.
It's consuming. It used to be, it used to be quite a the Carpe Yellow property, but it was so...
Yes, yes.
So the, this is, I'm sorry, I'll try to trace with the mouse. This is the lot right here, along this line, and actually, those hedges and the back hedges are, I'm sorry, not those hedges, these hedges here. So that's the back part of the property line, in rough terms, obviously. And then that's the north property line going across. So that, that lot is...
And that's just point two-six?
Yes.
A house?
Well, I mean...
Can you do a sweep, can you do a street view, so then you can see its height? Because it's not, it's a lot of verity, but not all.
Right, because it's into the hillside.
Starts with a parking object? But that's also like a residential construction, in effect visually. It looks like a three-star residential house. It's not like...
Yeah, well, with the number, I was just talking about going to missing, anyway. I don't know.
It helps, it helps.
It may have helped, to me it did.
You said it was point two-six?
Twenty-six.
Because we had talked about whether or not some of the properties needed to have difference...
Yes, so what?
On the size of the property, whether you needed to, the bigger ones. Bigger ones have...
The bigger ones have lower.
Bigger ones have low. But if you think about the smaller ones, would you want that to go one big and point two-six?
No. Yeah, but can...
So that even, and the reason I noticed it, because I thought, well, I looked at that, I considered that. Could you say, you know, if the property is under one acre, it could be this. If it's, you know, under five acres, it could have a slightly smaller FAR than the one acre. And then, because it's how it works in the residential districts, you know, the bigger the lot, the smaller the FAR. Whereas the smaller the lot, the bigger the FAR. So then I was looking at, oh, what's the FAR for this? I was...
Well, again, my point is, I was making was, we've sort of already incrementally gone larger and larger. Sometimes you get numb to the change when you get comfortable with the new numbers. Larry, can we go back to the aerial view for a second? So that driveway is, is that part of that property?
This here?
Yeah.
Yes, that's essentially the north property line.
Okay.
Well, it's just inside of that. That, where that line is that Google puts on here actually serves the property behind it, right here.
That's...
Which I think is the Holy Spirit Association, right?
Now, do they come out that road or they come out on East East Side?
I think it comes out here, but I haven't...
Yeah, it seems like that car's leading right now.
It's all in that car.
And then on this side, where's, that's straight.
Right, basically where this, where this line is, yeah, it's a straight line, but...
And that's how many acres that...
One acre.
I mean, certainly allowing that to go to point three would not be that critical of the change, right? I mean, but a point four would be a major factor.
Yeah, point three.
But as of right, it's point three.
Right, we have point three for the whole...
You can still control the, you can control the bonus, you know, it's...
There's coverage limitations, too, that would kick in, so they may be, they may be above their max at this point. We don't know, we've done an analysis of that.
But you know what, they were close to it. I'm just thinking about the numbers that, I can tell you that...
We have multiple controls here that are competing with each other.
We got ten percent.
And is that determined to be a historic building, so that you can...
The existing, now, the existing footprint is four thousand five hundred and forty-four and the lot is forty-three thousand nine ninety-six, so just about a ten percent. I mean, that was just about the zoning that we're recommending. It's really interesting.
It seems about right, I think, yeah. I don't have a problem, it seems natural for that lot, considering the idea was to model what's already... Well, what else? Okay, now, this is gonna be like a hypothetical system.
Well, obviously, that wouldn't need the setback from Broadway.
Right, right.
No, I know, but it's okay. No, I, we didn't. They have some.
Okay, they had some elevation drawings?
Yeah, I mean, maybe you know...
I have, I have them on here, so...
So, our other big question was, what was the, was looking from Strawberry Lane, we wanted to know, that's what we're talking about now.
Right, yes, I, I floated that to you.
Yes, yes.
Before we get off this property, just one, that was meant, I wasn't even thinking about, so with setbacks, this property, I mean, it's just existing non-conformant, right? There's no way, whatever, so if someone was trying to redevelop it, they would not be able to tear it down and build something else, right? I mean, they, the only way they could really make use of it...
Or say, tear it down, they'd have to make a zone in there.
Yeah.
It's...
Right, so they're really locked in on that.
I think that always was the understanding.
Let me see, I have to subtract one.
I mean, because I remember that coming up, even when we were talking about rezoning, these parts, when we rezoned, we moved from twenty thousand to forty thousand, maybe that was always the thinking. They were pretty much, they're pretty much locked in. We haven't had, and we're all, I get a little kid.
Well, I'm gonna move on to the, other pictures. Yeah, the visuals, I wanna...
Yeah, I, I know they sent it to me back, I really can't...
Do you want to pull the mic up here, just a second? Yeah, it's probably easier, since there's the post, and it's all here now.
And then, if there's any of those drawings that you had, I have mine.
Yeah, can we try, uh, S K three, please? Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and thank you for all the considerations that you've put in, and the changes and the provisions to the law, we really appreciate all the time. For the record, Taylor, Dave Smith, and Susan Janchill are professionals who will give you the pretty pictures. But as Mary mentioned, as the board mentioned, when we were with you last decade, we talked about some of the proposals that were specific for the F A R. And so my job tonight is sufficiently confuse you a little further with respect to the point four versus the point four five, but that's what I have my professionals to visually describe that. We originally started with, hey, we're the max on property, you know, we're different from our, our friends, because look at how far we are set back from the property, we have other constraints that relate to this site. We also have a mansion building, which is a local historic significant building, and what we were working with was our individual site. Now, we know this is a zoning district, it is applying to other properties, so ultimately what we were looking at was how could this relate to all properties, because not all properties sort of fit one mold. And because we are a four-acre site, we were trying to come up with the best mechanism to achieve a F A R that was developable, economically viable, and what a prior proposal had looked for and was looking to develop on the site. But we did provide analysis in one of our prior submissions, just about some New York specific assisted living facilities and their F A R. So, as you saw on the table before, I know it's not up on the board before you, I should have left that up there first, most of those facilities are in Connecticut. Connecticut's got better taxes, Connecticut's about everything, you know, just about everything better as far as the numbers are concerned. So, what they can get away with, we'll call it, as far as the development site, is a little different than here in New York, Westchester County in particular. So, there are some other economic factors that play into how those facilities might be able to justify their smaller F A Rs. So, here, that's just one point I wanted to sort of play in. At the last meeting when we were with you in November, there was a very good question by the board, and, and you asked us to look at this from a district-wide perspective. So, what we did in our December submission, and at the recommendation of, of the board's counsel, was prepare a more visually, a couple of things. One, to look at it from a district-wide, and how, how it could relate throughout all the properties in the district, to ensure that at a, which is essentially a point four development program for the site, point four five would be a maximum limit, so an extension if you provided a historic preservation of, or a preservation of a locally historic building, the maximum, no matter what you were looking at, whether it's the bonus or otherwise, would be point four five. And we had some economics analysis that dealt with that, but it, ultimately, it made sure that any property throughout the district wouldn't just get a carte blanche development size. We did recommend, as the, the attorney mentioned, that there was an opportunity to do it based on lot sizes, so there were some concepts that we tried to put in, but I think what we ultimately came up with was that the F A R as proposed, at point four five, is consistent with your comprehensive plan. Again, the buildings are set back, the example that was shown before, as mentioned by the board, was much closer to Broadway, this is sufficiently set back. So, what our original S K one and S K two plans that were submitted to this board showed was the visual in, from Broadway, because again, the, this district is designed to make sure that there are no impact, or there are, the impacts to Broadway of new development here is minimal, or keeping business as usual while also creating economically viable, commercial taxable uses on the sites. So, we did show those diagrams, and in just a minute, I will have Dave and Susan kind of lay that out. And then supplementally, we also provided recommendation of the board's counsel, some more details, almost the same style of drawing, but as visualized from Strawberry Lane. Now, we know the comprehensive plan was designed for Broadway, but we did provide those additional drawings, so that there would be conceptual ideas to show that they, they lack there to leap, uh, from point four to point five is consistent. And if I may, the existing zoning for the site is point four five, so it's not a total stretch to say that what we're proposing, notwithstanding all the other considerations that you have here, the existing zoning is point four five. So, what the applicant is proposing, existing condition...
Existing zoning is point four five.
It's, it's, this is an existing non-conforming building, so the site itself...
Well, can I just explain to...
Yes, absolutely, sorry.
We really, we don't really have F A R for, for, for not, for non-residential, but if you took, if you took the setbacks and the height that's permitted in the district, if it built to the maximum, it would be point four five. Not what's there now. No, 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 I'll tell you, no, I'll tell you what's there now, the chart I have here, because it's there now.
I told you, my job is here is to confuse you sufficiently, and, and have Dave and Susan clarify.
What it is currently?
Yeah.
I know Mary Ann's looking it up.
Give me one sec. The, the existing F A R is point twelve.
So, I have, if I could, I just had a couple of quick questions for, beyond that one. One, which is, we're talking about the need, um, you know, we're talking about an F A R of point four plus a point oh five bonus for the historical structure. So, what constraint is that putting on you in terms of assisted living facility? In other words, what's being put in the old structure? Because obviously, it's not gonna have, I would imagine, it's not gonna have rooms and any of those kinds of facilities, it's gonna have what? What are you getting by maintaining that building?
By maintaining the building or having the additional F A R in the, in that building? So, the, we're preserving, I guess, so I guess maybe I'm, if I understand the question, you mean preserving the mansion building?
I'm talking about, by preserving the mansion building, you're giving yourself an extra, uh, point percent.
Essentially, what we're saying is, we're proposing a development program of no more than point four. But we're, because we have a mansion building on our property, we're essentially carving out point oh five of that, because it already exists, and...
Right, and to be used as what? Because it could...
Could be support facilities for, uh, proposed use? Since this facility could be used for offices?
It'd have to be created.
Yeah, I guess I'm just, because the argument is that facilities have to be a certain size in New York State to be viable, I mean, you know, but there's a constraint here, because you've got point oh five, it is gonna be constrained by the historic structure itself.
Right, and it wouldn't be used as a, as a living, but it may be used in support of...
Reception side.
That might also be thought of in comparing to those other numbers that were put together by a K R F, only that building's gonna be used for it, so that's really the, the amount of space that can be the assisted living. So, if you don't, let's say you got rid of the historic structure, and you went for point three, it probably couldn't be viable. If you went for point four, and the historic structure was folded into that, that's really a point three five, it's not a point four.
Right, but this diagram...
There's point four plus the point oh five.
So, that was, I apologize, our, so we had that confusion, and we, and the...
I understand that, I'm just trying to talk about, you know, what the benefit of the historic building, besides field grid, you're, the extra floor space is gonna be significantly constrained as to how it's used, I mean...
It can be rented out as office space otherwise, it's just that you're keeping it for the, the character of the village.
So, then the second question I had, basically, was, um, this doesn't show any enhancements to Strawberry Lane, so the zoning code would require Strawberry Lane to be widened up until the, the access point, which means that the planted area where you're talking about vermin and stuff for screening would have to be, um, become narrower effectively by some amount, five feet, ten feet, whatever it is. And I, right now, it's about, you know, the narrowest neck appears to be about forty feet, so that's, and, you know, you, as you pointed out, or maybe the inference from the diagrams, elevation diagrams, is those are gonna have to be trees, obviously, pretty significant trees, to give you the, the, the screening that the neighbors are gonna demand. So, you know, as you start narrowing that strip of plantability, you start getting it strained in a different way.
And that's, but that's kind of what we, that's sort of the theme of what we're, we're working with. The F A R is one of the many pieces of this sort of complicated puzzle that is this district, but also in particular the site. But we're trying to make sure it's generally applicable throughout your district, and not giving any specific preference.
I was just putting out that the diagram is actually, doesn't represent the, the actual, uh, south side, uh, state that the property's gonna have to be in, in other words, for you to, moving back, white in Strawberry Lane on that.
Right, and I think for the benefit, as you mentioned, maybe we'll pull up S K four that also, is it S K four? Yeah, S K four, that shows exactly what you're referring to, which is the elevation, that can help.
Yeah, I should stay there for a second.
Yeah. Mark, you're getting into, we're, we're almost designing the site as if they're actually, as an actual proposal. You could actually shift the driveway further to, towards Broadway?
Yep.
And have the access road come in, and then you have that additional area for buffering screening.
When you show a diagram of an example of what the build-out would be like, and it doesn't, one aspect of it doesn't conform to the code as we're discussing it, it just sets up a red flag in my mind. I understand this is not a final design process that's lived for the planning board, but, you know, it just does show that the, that the ease on the south side would be, the effective available space would be narrowed to some degree.
Absolutely, and again, we're, the original designs that we showed were the impact of Broadway, because that was what the zoning district was designed for. Understanding comments from the public, we want to make sure we, we'd show that it was being addressed, and we certainly understand your point, but there will be a number of planning considerations that go through, uh, in both processes.
So, I know what you mean, but that seems like a leading question. I mean, whatever the zoning is, is gonna require sufficient screening on the south side for, Strawberry Lane has become a major issue, so...
Understood, and if I may, I'm just gonna have Dave go through the plans, just, I'm sorry, just Susan, Susan go through the, the plans, and that way it can help.
Let's go see the elevation then.
Yep.
Just wanna go to the elevations, sorry. Uh, S K four.
Four.
So, we're, we were asked to, you know, in, in order to understand better what, what we're proposing, and, and what it really, the effect of keeping the, the historic structure, as well as having a building as, you know, the diagram shows of the F A R, of that building being point four, and how it could be done. Of course, this is just how it could be done, hopefully it will be done in a different way, we don't want it to look like a square like that. But I, I think what this diagram shows is that the, the topography works with the, with the plan, basically with the stepping down on the hill, and, and from one of the questions was, what is it gonna be, um, what's the impact gonna be on the property to the east of, of the building, of the mansion building? And you see that, you know, while it will be visible, it will not take away the view in terms of, it's, it's not toweling over the property, the neighboring property to the east. Now, if you look at the neighboring property to the south, similarly, it's actually within the scale of the neighboring property to the south. This is the, the, um, there's a one house that is, um, two properties, one conjoined house there, that's sitting right on the buffer line of that property, it seems. So, that's really the closest in that you're going to be, and, and sort of the, the most diff, impact, visual impact, but it also steps up the hill as well. So, on that house, you drive into the lower garage, and then the cut line is actually taken at the front door of the lower house, and then behind it, the house steps up to be a higher house. So, there's already a higher elevation, like a roof line over there, while the roof line of the, or the maximum height of the potential new structure, you know, stays within that sort of scale of the, of the height of the existing buildings to the, to the south.
So, it looks like they're exactly the same height?
The two buildings, well, yes, um, the, like, basically, the, the buildings to the south, it's pretty much, it's from our analysis, about twenty-five feet high, from, from the, the finished floor elevation to the peak, but it steps up the hill. So, the first one downhill is twenty-five feet, and then it steps up another, you know, five to ten feet, and the next one is another five feet up, so, yeah, it, it's hard to explain because it's topography.
They use a little cursor as she's, where she's...
Do you understand what I'm saying, Larry?
Well, can I just show one thing that may be helpful?
The diagram, yeah.
Well, yeah, so, so the section, so first of all, the sections that you're looking at, the top section on that other page, which is the one, uh, that looks...
The long one.
From the upper house, the, the house to the east, which is right here. This line right here, this line right here is, is that section, so if you took a knife along that line, cut the, cut the arc off, and looked at it from the side, that's what it would look like.
Okay.
The, the other section, this is, this is the line right here, the B line, and then you're looking at it from, I guess...
From Broadway's side of it?
Broadway up the hill to that section. So, again, if you cut off, and then looked at it from the side, from Broadway, that's the bottom representation, on the next page.
So, you know, we know that, you can see the topography, here's two fifty, here's two forty, here's two thirty, so, you know, it, it goes down about ten feet, so this steps up the hill a little bit, so the roof line is a little bit higher, and then the next building down steps down, so the roof line is a little bit lower. So, I just wanted to point that out, that, you know, while it is a twenty-five foot height building, there's still, you know, relative height to what the building would be across the street.
And I think a significant point that we were trying to, to make with all these designs is to show that the, the difference of F A R from point four to point five, again, with the building program of only still point four, maintaining the historic structure at point oh five, there's not a, a, a visual impact that would cause any negative impacts to the Broadway quarter or to Strawberry Lane, so that's, that distinction was clear, just...
But it would seem, and I, I may just be looking at this wrong, that you, you're still maintaining relative size of buildings, but that from the house now, you could only have your previous sightline from your top floor.
Um, from a house to the, to the east, you're saying? Um, right, well, I think currently, the view, I mean, it...
That's, yes, yes, we're not impeding, there would be any impediment to, of the view from that property looking.
Well, isn't it impeded by the white building?
Because my action...
Right.
The, the, the block's not that big compared to, the, the library is quite small compared to that.
I should go back to the other room, yeah. So, this is cutting here, so the view shed sort of is like this, have, when you're looking downhill, yes, you would, you're gonna be cutting off some of the view shed of that house. That said, right now, it could be redeveloped and cut off the view shed to some of that house.
Right, I'm just, I'm just trying to understand you.
But also, the view, I mean, this is minimal, but this building is, is, you know, a lower level, but it is closer in, so it's, there's less, there's, they already see sort of this more of a, of a office kind of structure.
But they don't see three stories.
No, they don't see three stories, but what, what we're showing is that, that they're really only seeing around a story and a half higher than that on the, of the section. You know, we're not, they're not seeing three stories, because they're, they're up another ten feet from here, right? So, while there is, there is visibility, I think the, the sort of, if you go to the sort of negative impact, it's, yes, it is a negative impact, but it's not in the sense that it's, um, you know, it wouldn't be allowed under normal circumstances. You know, you're not taking out all the value of, of that view from that house.
Can you go back to the other question?
that it's, you know, it wouldn't be allowed under normal circumstances. You know, you're not taking out all the value of, of that view from that house.
Can you go back to the other part?
Should try the alt-tab function.
That's too much for one night.
So, so Mary Ann, did you say that at, at point four, which is what the building minus the mansion house is, that was 70,000?
Mm-hmm.
And if it, and if that was increased to point four-five?
Fifty-seven, about 78,000.
So, so 8,000 more square feet.
Almost 9,000.
I don't know, just tell me the question. We're not talking about going to a point five effective.
No.
Right. So.
Right, right, I understand.
So they couldn't get that extra footage of that building?
Right.
And if it was smaller, it would be, if it was point three-five, that should have been my question.
Right.
If the larger building went for point four, which is what they're showing.
Yeah.
At 70,000.
Right.
To point three-five, what was that, that square footage?
That would be one fourth, one, so what's the proportion was? How much less?
Seventy-five.
Or, or that, wait, I'm, oh, because.
Right, so what I'm saying is if we.
If you left the mansion there.
If we left the mansion and they built out to what, what we're saying, which is a maximum of point four.
Correct.
That building's gonna be point.
Three-five, correct.
And the mansion's gonna be point four-five.
Correct.
And what, what's that, just roughly, I'm just trying to get a picture.
Most of, most of the third floor.
It's gonna be about 12% smaller.
Most of the third floor.
Yeah, it's gonna be seven eighths, like 35, 40s, it's gonna be seven eighths, which is about 12, it's gonna be 12% less.
Right, and that's what the prior proposal for the property came in, saw, and that was the straw that broke the camel's back.
Now, how many bed facility you're looking at?
If you, if it's, it's, they had 70,000, if you take the average of what these things were like, 70,000, you'd be in about 79 units, and you could have about 81.
Okay, which is well below, we have 150 max.
Yeah.
Well, well.
Yeah, 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 that's what I'm missing. What is interesting though is if you apply those numbers to the Carafiala property, what you come up with, way bigger numbers than you guys were comfortable with before. I think essentially those numbers are number four.
In terms of number of units?
Yeah.
But we have a fixed number.
Yeah, but it does give you an idea.
Scale.
It's a capability that the one, the one, where you, where you.
Is that scale, if we, if we applied that to the Carafiala property, is that scale larger than the last Brightview proposal of that property? Yes, larger than that.
Is one way, this, I'm just, just trying to get my head around it. Is this a way of thinking about it, that essentially, the existing mansion building would represent the increase in FAR?
Increase from that point four, yes.
So, in order to build what you need, is, is this a horse trade? In order to build what you need?
And save the building.
Which what you want, and save the, and keep the building, which is what we want.
Right. That's, right. Which everybody generally wants, okay.
Yeah, I think what, what the analysis was prepared, the, under the point three, Larry, did you ask that question? The point three is approximately 52,000 square feet. Going from the point three to point four, almost add up to almost 70,000 square feet. That's essentially the third story on that graph. And what we tried to illustrate is that, difference in, that added FAR from Broadway, given topography, given landscaping, due vegetation, so that's what we're trying to, it's imperceptible from the goal of the comprehensive plan and preserving the Broadway quarter. And understanding that there are, if there are impacts, and traffic impacts, they need to be mitigated, we're asked to have.
But again, applying those same levels to other properties in the district may have less, they have different effects than applying it to maximum properties.
Right, and they have different, they're different acreages, and the board has the ultimate control over, you know, what public benefits are provided. There's relationships still with the density, with the bonus, so it's not a fixed, you know, we're not saying it needs to be point four-five as of right. We're, we're just saying, properties that do have existing historic building counted for, and that would be.
And I believe in, in our last submission, we did do a quick evaluation, that there are other environmental issues with the Carafiala property that means that there's less developable area, given environmental constraints, steep slopes and the like. And that, again, that would all have to be evaluated as part of the environment review prior to any formal submission.
Wait, wait, there'd be less developable area, but the FAR, FAR is computed on gross side area, not on the.
No, I understand that if you've got less area to actually fit.
Actually, yeah.
Right, so that's a constraint.
You do have a lot of constraints, right.
Right, that's all.
I think we have to explore this, because there's something that.
I'm, I'm missing something, Larry, listen.
All right. So the question, if I understood it correctly, was, if you take the numbers that we're talking about here, the point four, let's say, and you apply that to the Carafiala property, would that yield a square footage larger than what the Brightview plan was? Was that the question?
Well, would you have point four-five?
All right, so point, point five.
Well, because, the only way they get to point four-five is because they've saved, they've saved the three buildings.
Right, and we've said, and we've said that it's so wonderful, we're gonna give you a full point 10 extra.
Yeah.
Right, okay.
Or, hold on, stop. A full point five extra.
Point oh-five, point oh-five.
Depends on, depends on what the area of their buildings are, I don't remember, what the square footage of their buildings were, the FAR.
But the maximum would be, for the building, the new building would be point four, talking.
Right, well, as currently drafted, right. So, so the question, I'm, I'm looking at a schedule that was done at some point here, and this is where I'm trying to understand this. So, Ashley had done a potential maximum build-out hypothetically if there were no FAR, no cap on FAR, right? And.
Oh, okay.
I can pull this up, by the way, if it's helpful.
Yeah, what she's doing is, she, that's the, the maximum footprint, constant three stories. That's how she got it.
Sure.
She took the maximum footprint, constant three stories.
Right, right, so, so this, so this schedule, this, this is the Carafiala property, KDF Holdings. So I think what this is saying is that if there were no cap because of other constraints like footprints, you know, essentially coverage and all that, and setbacks, that the maximum build-out would be 104,000 square feet.
About 105, yeah.
About 105, right, which is, which is almost identical to point three, as you can see.
Which is a lot smaller than.
Which, but, but that's almost, but, but that's almost identical to the last Brightview proposal.
Right.
Which was 100,000, I think he said, right, close to 100. So that, I.
That's a really good point.
I just wanted to clear that up, because it's not.
There's more limitation than FAR. Or if you, if you just looked at FAR, their FAR would be something like 140,000, 157,000.
Right.
There are no limitations.
The FAR is not the controlling factor on that particular property, and in fact, if you look at this chart quickly, you can see the ones that are negative is where the FAR doesn't control, the ones that are positive is where the FAR is controlling.
So look what Abbott House could do.
Well, sure, and so, so if you're talking about stratifying your, if you're talking about stratifying your FAR, this schedule might be able to help you do that. If you want to keep the maximum build-out close to what it is without a cap, but, I mean, it's a tool anyway, you can look at, and I'm not, and that's probably where, the limit of what I understand.
But, but maybe, maybe it doesn't matter. Shows the FAR would permit something that big, but coverage doesn't allow it to be that big.
Right.
Does it matter?
So, right.
But you have to look at the coverage property.
So put, yeah, put another way, and again, this is all hypothetical, this one.
Write this down, you mean.
But, but, but in all seriousness, if you, if you eliminate, for, for their property, if you eliminated the FAR cap, you would end up with a maximum building equal to point five-eight. So that's where we are, and that's what we're looking to control, to give you a ballpark of where we're at, but that's because the other controls we have in place don't kick in enough to constrain that, it's really the FAR that's controlling this.
So what else constraints, coverage, parking lots are counted, right, but driveways not? Is that a true statement, or am I?
I'm sorry, what?
Coverage, parking lots counted, but driveways not.
No, driveways aren't. It's, it's just in residential districts that driveways are. Coverage includes driveways, but in, and if you look in the residential district, it specifically says that driveways aren't to be considered in coverage in, in, weren't single-family residence districts, I think two families.
Now, when we were talking about this, I've got to have a refresh on this conversation, I just don't recall now. We were down to, you know, subgr, uh, subgrade parking, and whether or not that was gonna impact the height limitation on the buildings.
There's some specific in some.
That we eliminated that as, we, there's a giveaway of parking, not a giveaway, but the parking is not counted against the height constraint.
It's an encouragement for underground parking. It's an encouragement for.
It's not the FAR, but if it's underground, then it, it doesn't work, it's measured from the parking.
It's incentivizing underground.
Hey, but, so here's what I'm trying to get at, sorry, that was a long-winded way to get at.
Well.
There is a way around some of the limitations we're talking about on the Carafiala property, if I understand it, which is to put underground parking. Therefore, a huge swath of parking lot disappears, so they can actually build a significantly larger building, once you put the parking underneath it.
But underground parking is also very, very, it is a very expensive undertaking, yeah.
That's not my point, writing the check.
No, I understand, but it just makes it economic viability, it brings right back the conversation of being unconditional FAR.
Well, the limiting factors by.
Right, right.
Not the viability.
And David, if I may, FAR is sort of an older concept, too, just as far as zoning and how things are controlled. I mean, I'm, I'm just relating.
Do you understand what I was saying about that?
I'm, I'm trying to figure out how she did this, how she came up with the maximum building footprint. My guess is from setbacks? No, no.
Can't be setbacks.
No.
Is it, is it a division from the net buildable area?
Well, there is a lot of.
Those relate pretty closely.
Yeah, it's 20, it's 20%,.
Oh, so the net buildable area?
Yeah, for those stupid, it's not this one. Oh, 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 oh. Oh, yeah, 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 okay. The net buildable area would be subtracting all the steep slopes and everything.
Right.
And then of that, 20%. And that's what, that's one of the reasons the Maxar property doesn't have that same limitations, because their net buildable area is almost the same as the gross area.
Yeah, but that was, but I was getting back to that point, if you look at the lot size, with its 352,000 square feet, 374,000.
Right.
It's almost the same as the mansion.
Right, because there's so much steep slopes there.
So I think what this exercise means is that whatever number you're standing here debating will actually only impact two of the properties, Abbott House and theirs, the maximum.
Except for the idea that the Carafiala property could get a lot more density by putting underground parking, couldn't it? Because then you're removing, the building could take the coverage that the, that the parking lot.
Building coverage and, and.
Maximum.
Imperative surface, two different.
Numbers separate, I'm pretty sure.
Okay, the total lot coverage.
Coverage, lot coverage is 30%. Building coverage, 20%, lot coverage, 30%.
So they're two different things, so. So I guess what that means is that wherever you put the parking, if it's inside building, it's not giving you more building space.
This is size the building could be. No matter what, the building can't be bigger than.
20%, which is what Ashley gave you.
What's 34,000, I guess.
So, so where are we? So where at the point where we have to, we're talking about point oh-five difference?
Exactly, and, and really impacting only two properties in the district, which is why it's hard to.
No, 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 we're talking about point 10. I mean, the net on yours, we're talking, because you're proposing an FAR point 40, and our code is point 30, plus you could have the 10% bonus.
So the bulk, right, I was.
So the ba, the basic FAR is either point three or point four, that this is what we're debating.
Yeah, Michael.
It isn't really point oh-five, no.
Okay.
One of the things I was thinking is that, I like keeping it at point three, but, you know, as the base, but if you allow, you know, the Board of Trustees in their sole discretion or whatever says, if you want to go up from the point four, point four-five, then it would have to be a great design or in the great public interest.
Well, right now, you've got to go from point three to point four.
That's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying.
So you're saying make it bigger.
Because then if it's like, you know, there's some great public interest, and the plan is fantastic, and everyone seems to agree on it, then the, then the Board of Trustees' sole discretion, you know, this is the way they're going to point four now, it's almost like the same thing, it wouldn't ever be as.
Better to point 10, as she's saying, than point 15.
Yeah, well, wouldn't that same thing happen? I mean, just let me, you separated the historic building bonus from the, from the BOT's bonus, so they could be additive, not, they don't come from the same pie, you know what I'm saying? So you could have up to 10% from the BOT, plus whatever the historical building is giving you, so that would be conceivably at a 45, a 45 at that point.
But doesn't the historical building give you a different amount based on what the building is here?
Yes, yes.
Here, it just happens to be a point.
But we're just talking, right, so, but it's whatever the building gives you, it's so that would be additive to whatever the.
Yeah, well, you might, you still might want to put a limit on it, though, because what?
Well, the only place that would kill us would be Abbott House.
If you call that things of storage.
And that's why we said the cap at point four-five, no matter, even if you, even if your building was point three, you don't get that benefit, it's just up to point oh-five. So the overall cap of FAR of any property, no matter what you're preserving, is point four, point four-five with the bonuses. So point three, you can get up to point one-five as a bonus, and no more than that, no matter how big your, or your historic building is that you're preserving.
That works with you guys.
Well, we are one of, of the two properties, there are really two properties that are most impacted by this, and it really is the maximum property and.
Right, no, I understand, but.
But again.
Absolutely not.
The amount of increase from, from point three as the base, we're not thinking about changing the base at point three, and if we're allowed to go up on the, at the board's discretion to point four-five, doesn't have to go up to point four.
No, we depend on the specific area.
The board's discretion, we can say point four, so it would really depend on what the circumstances were for each individual property, whether it's affordable housing, whoever.
Who knows what it is, side steps on Broadway.
So, so this is like, really like a thought experiment, because I'm not suggesting you could actually do this, but if you took that, that historical building and converted it into affordable units, so now you've got a double benefit, you're preserving the structure and you're, you know, contributing to one of our goals, that might justify.
That's what I'm saying, there's an additive bonus in that case. That's a case where you're, you're keeping the historical building, plus you're doing other things that's to the value to the village, and therefore.
Exactly.
You can give them the 10 plus the 5.
And you could also say, you know what, because it's not for public interest, you're done.
So you get one.
Yeah, exactly. Hung up a problem with that. Because to me, it's, it just gives the, gives maximum flexibility to the Board of Trustees.
And they're so, the properties are so specific and different, every size, deposit.
Just one thing, it's not maximum discretion, because the thing about historical buildings is automatic in the code. It's not.
Point oh-five.
You could not give.
Well, in this case.
Yes, exactly, I just wanted to be clear about.
Well, yeah. Yeah, but I think, and it's also every proposal is gonna be done, so your untieing hands of the. the hands of the treaty.
So somebody may come in, in the existing, you know, F A R point three, but the way they're designing the building is blocking the view for, you know, neighboring, that's not gonna work, so it's, it's very individual, and it, it includes all of those factors.
Yeah, it's not, it's not as a right either.
Think it out for involved units.
But wait a minute though, what, what if you had somebody, um, let's say, let's say they would be, they, they're, they're, the histor- the significance of a building on their property brings it up to point 10, um, but they're, they're not, they want to save it, but they're not doing anything else special, they're not putting inside lots of affordable housing or anything, so you're not saying they should just be able to get point oh-five, are you?
Well, the way the law is written right now, it doesn't say that.
No, they could go to point 10, they can go to point 10.
Yeah.
But the suggestion that the board, that the board could give point 10, and you could get point oh-five for a historical, doesn't really help encourage the, the person who's not providing anything else other than a historic house, let's say it's at point 10.
But there is one, there isn't a property like that.
Well, is, is, is Abbott House?
Abbott House would be much bigger than that, right?
Yeah, but, but then they should be able to go to point one, point one instead of point oh-five, you know, I, I think, I think the point oh-five could be too low.
The preservation of the stor- structure should, should be the full point one, just because their building happens to be point oh-five, I don't think we need to cut it off.
Oh, I see what you're saying, okay, okay.
The board, and just hypothetically, the board could then add to it for other good causes shown, but in no event exceed point four-five.
Yes.
Okay, that's a nice, that's a.
Put that down.
Thank you, thank you.
It's capping the historic building at point, point one.
Exactly.
Is now, and I think that, my concern is if you make that number too low, the incentive goes away to preserve it.
And, and in that case, Mark, and I think you might want to take what, the issue you were raising before about why do you have the saving historic structure in there?
Why does it have to be special? A special one?
This, yeah, just take that out.
Just combine it to one?
Yeah, oh, as an example, you mean?
Take it out as an example, because otherwise it looks like you could get.
Do it again.
Bonus for the same thing, right. So you're saying, but you're, the historic building, you don't automatically get point one, you get it whatever size it is.
Whatever size, right, up to point one.
That's what I was.
Up to point one, yes.
Yes.
So that would limit the Abbott House.
Yeah.
If the whole, the whole thing's, yeah.
Point 12.
Right.
Point 38, right. Whatever that is, yeah, this is a 100,000 square foot, but a couple 100,000 square feet. So, yeah, I think that's right, I think that's, that's the answer.
You say that you can get up to point one, uh, you can go to a maximum point four-five, but it's.
Board's discretion.
Board's discretion.
All right.
I think it, I think it just gives you maximum flexibility for the.
Right.
Prop, the, right, uh, proposal, for the right uses, for all kind of encourages, and encourages safely doing the right things. But it still gives you the control if it's another bright view that people don't like.
I mean, your board of trustees has some of the same sentiments, but.
Yeah, but if they didn't, they could say you can go to, they could change the whole law.
Exactly.
You can't legislate into that. So we're talking about Irvington Equities, is that, is the northernmost building, right?
Yes, that's the first building we looked at.
And what we say right now, that that, that, remind me, we said that existing building was, what was its F A R?
Twenty-six, point two-six.
But they're constrained by setbacks and everything, so.
And according to this, the, the maximum they couldn't even go to is 100, so.
Yeah, they're, yeah.
So any of this discussion would just have.
They're all pretty, they're, they're pretty, yeah. And then the.
Got that as a use to the code.
The Great Big Holy Spirit Association doesn't have anything on it, does it?
I'm not sure how, I'm not sure how they're mixing their, their stuff right.
I'm not sure which one's which, no, I have a feeling the Baywood, so, the, the very big one is.
Oh, but it's not in the store.
Yeah, no, that's, that Conference Center's not historic.
No, but there's a circle building on it.
Is there? One day it will be.
Yeah, there might be, yeah.
Touche.
There's that one cool building there.
Oh, there is?
Yeah. I was in there once. Oh, wait, but the, but that one has a, that one has an overall constraint anyway of point three-four according to this.
Well, because look at, look at the net buildable area, it's what, the lot size is 769, and the net buildable area is only 441.
Is that because of slopes again?
I'm assuming so.
I think it's also sometimes, is that the one that has the long sort of?
No, this, setbacks doesn't have to do with this enough, wasn't that, was that right, right, right? It's probably slope.
I think.
Right, that'd be a different constraint they would have.
I don't remember the steep slopes.
Well, send your brother Cam, I don't know if it'll cut out a little.
I used to picture it.
It definitely goes up, it definitely goes uphill, no questions, sunny side.
Oh, definitely.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I just, I just get a picture of like a. Well, there's gotta be the other side of the slope to Carafiala, somewhere.
Let's go to the videotape.
Let's go to the videotape.
Yeah, I know that.
Come on, Dan.
Oh, well, just. Just need a second, there we go. So, someday I'll show you how to do that. That's the, that's the Conference Center, or you want to call it, you know, I, I don't know that.
Want to grab my picture?
Maybe, maybe that's, maybe that's the historic building.
I think there's another one over, you can back it up.
Yeah, that's.
Oh, there you go, there you go.
That's why I was.
There you go.
I'll take the coolest historic.
The Mayoral Mansion.
But.
Well, could be a third.
Yeah.
Looks pretty dry.
Yeah.
Would you go inside and find it?
At the mansion.
Practically take a tour with us, to use it.
Yeah, that's what makes it amazing.
I know I missed this.
My son has V R, you can do it in V R, you're probably, I have a feeling you're going through it, it's crazy.
Did you do a filter on this, or it's coming out of?
No, that's Google Earth, Google Maps.